All right, I'm going to call the April 11th, 2017 meeting of the Norton Plan Board to order, and all members of the board are present this evening, as is Tabitha Harkins, our Planning and Economic Development Director. Our first item on the agenda is a determination of for a definitive plan modification request for Mary Jo Estates. The applicant can come and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. My name is Elliot Bray. I'm an attorney in North Atterboro, Massachusetts. The purpose of this hearing is twofold. The first purpose is, this was a rather lengthy, if I can just hand out a quick outline that might help the board members.
A timeline for you?
So this is a timeline that identifies some of the issues that this project had encountered. It was originally approved on 6/4/2014, as East Hodges 4 may approved. It was recorded, as you can see, on about August 15, 2014. After that, the National Heritage got involved, and there was quite a few studies done relative to turtles and such things. Following that, the applicant then attempted to file a notice of intent, had a number of meetings, additional information was requested. You can see we get down into 2015, and that notice of intent, the Conservation Commission, was denied. They appealed that to the DEP. There was field visits, supplemental filings with the DEP, extensions, and a superseding order approving the project was November 10, 2016, which in fact would have been approximately five months after the two-month extension. Two years, excuse me. So as a result of all the appeals, the National Heritage and the Conservation Commission, they were never able to even proceed with the project. As of yesterday, if you check, the National Heritage, the final plan was approved on April 10, yesterday. So even today, they're not prepared to go forward, because under that plan, it is required that a scientist come out, do a field inspection, identify if there's any endangered species, and if there are, they be moved, and if there aren't, then they would get that approval. At that point, then they could commence with the project. So we are requesting, and if I read the rules correctly for the town, we're requesting a one-year extension, because I think that's all that can be requested under the rules. But it would have to be retro to what I would consider to be a termination date of June 4, 2016, which would put us to June 4, 2017, and I believe the board has the authority to give one-year extensions. And with all due respect, it's quite possible by June, we may have to come in for another one, because again, we don't have that final field investigation done from the National Heritage. So that's the fundamental issue that we're confronted with this evening.
Okay. There's a second, in the letter from your engineering, there's a second issue about utilities?
Yes, the second issue with utilities kind of ties in again. So National Grid, we contacted National Grid, and they said, geez, we did our field, we did our investigation, and June 4, 2016 was the expiration of your two-year period. So we won't do any work until you get an extension. So again, we need, for the same reason, we need an extension ex post facto, which will run us through June 4 of 2017. Again, with all due respect, I'm not sure, I don't believe we will be complete by then. We may have to come in prior to June 4, 2017, for one final extension.
Okay, well, this letter also requests that, and I can read it. Utilities, is the subdivision what we, was approved requiring the utilities to be installed underground?
Yes.
And that...
The applicant at this time would like them to be above ground. There were issues there, again, because of the Conservation Commission, wetlands, et cetera. It seems much more appropriate to go above ground and avoid all the issues with the wetlands.
Okay.
Well, it sounded like from the letter that it was a National Grid issue, not a turtle issue.
There's both. There's both. Yeah, the National Heritage clearly has been monitoring the turtle issue, and if you look in the scheduler, you'll see that it was on 8/13/2014, requested more information for their review, 4/30/2015, no-take letter. And that process has been going on, and simultaneously, when we finished with the superseding order with the DEP, we started and said, okay, let's move forward with National Grid. They said, well, you needed to have this started by June 4, 2016. We won't do the work without the extension. So I think there's two simultaneous issues going on at the same time.
That's a comment.
I'm with Mr. Landry, who's also present, who'd like to say something. He's one of the principals for the entity.
Excuse me, yes, Walter Landry of North Atterboro. What it is, is that the second part of that is, and the National Grid said that they cannot do the underground there as requested by the board, because of, against their regulations and a safety issue, about going overhead to underground to going overhead again. And so after an extended amount of time of going back and forth with them, they finally gave us some why they couldn't do that, and so that's what's taken up to this time.
So you're looking at two options, one to utilize existing pole locations, which are on both sides of the roadway, or to install new poles within the subdivision along the right-hand side of the roadway?
Yes. And there's two options, in that, to be perfectly honest, National Grid won't tell us what they want to do until after we hear from you, and then basically, you know, National Grid's going to do what National Grid is going to do. So I'm not sure which one they're going to say that they are in line with, because it seems like you have to go back and ask them, and then they'll come back and tell you what you can't do after you ask them. Not so much that they'll tell you what they can do before.
Prospectively, right. Prospectively, it doesn't work that way.
So there's existing poles, right, that service the home in the back property?
Yes.
Correct.
But that, the lines within zigzag back and forth across the road, by understanding of what you're asking for?
Yes, for where the poles are right now, it does cross the road two times, I believe. On the plan that Chris Howard had attached to the letter, it does show the existing pole locations, and so it does show a crossing of the roadway. National Grid said that they would look at reusing the existing poles and possibly relocating a couple of poles, depending on how their final layout works.
I think it would be better to be all on one side. Keep it all, yeah. Do you see the line here?
Typically, typically, they would. I hate to say what I think they're going to do, because it's only going against me every time I try to guess.
Well, if we had our druthers, I think we'd like it on one side of the road.
Oh, I understand. Yes, it would, it would make sense to do that, yes.
Okay. All right, so we have to request, two items for a request, one a continuance, and the other one on the utility issue. Questions?
Why did it take two years to come? I mean, your date for completion was August 15, 2016?
Correct, and as you can see from the...
I totally understand everything that happened afterwards. Why did it take you until, you know, April 11, 2017, to come in front of us?
Well, to be honest with you, the superseding order was in late in 2016. The National Grid issue, we went back and forth. We didn't even know if we had a project until we won the DEP issue. That's the first issue. So if they said no, there's no project. Number two, the National Heritage is still floating out there, and that was still an issue. So we really, you know, they weren't certain whether they had a project. It was tenuous there for a while, and the DEP issue was a big issue, which again was five months after they technically should have completed the project. So I apologize for being late, but they really didn't want to spend a lot more money unless they knew they had a project that was viable.
Okay. Any questions or comments on anything here?
So are you, is, you're waiting for National Grid, basic, after us? If all this passes through, and you're, I mean, is there any chance that National Grid is going to pull the plug on it?
No, we don't think that's going to be the issue with this approval. They statutorily, until they have what they consider to be site access, a live permit, they're not going to do any work. They won't even go to engineering, is the point we're making.
Sure.
But I also, we have the National Heritage, that we still have to do a field walk with the scientists, and that's another reason why I think we're going to be back here before June 4 of 2017, this year.
So it references a turtle fence being installed?
Correct.
And so that's happening, that's going to be after April 15? That was per National Heritage?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, and so after that's done, then they'll do the field investigation?
Yes, to corral the turtles?
Then they'll move it. If they have to move, and if there's nothing they have to move, then they'll give us a clean bill of health.
Then they check to make sure those turtles are on the right side of the fence before you can start work.
Correct, exactly.
And so really, that, that's what's really driving the length of time is National Heritage, because without that, nothing else is going to move forward.
Correct.
So is it possible you're going to be able to complete in a year? If everything kind of lines up, are you going to be able to finish in a year, or are you looking at two years or three years, so that you're not, I don't know how many times...
If I had, this is, this is an educated guess.
I'm actually, actually not talking to you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the guy who's doing the work.
If we could get, if we could go for the two-year, I don't know if you can do that. Depending on, I mean, if we get the two years from the August date that Chris had asked for, we should be able to have it all done by then, because it appears that the other two pieces will happen. I'm not sure how fast National Grid will work, but they haven't told us that they won't do it. They just said they won't finish the design work and do a pole layout until after they hear from the board. So it appears that it'll go ahead, and so we can see the end in sight more so than we could before, than we even knew we were going to run it before.
I mean, I'm just wondering if it would make sense to wait until, well, you can't get anything from National Grid?
We can't, right, because he doesn't have an active permit right now. It's not a valid permit. So he's sort of chicken and egg issue happening here.
Question for the, in terms of one year or two year? Are we limited to one year?
Tabitha's checking the rules.
Okay.
I checked the regs. It said one year.
Said one year.
I can find...
We don't do a lot of subdivisions lately, so we're not fresh on the rules.
Just to save you to look it up.
They'll probably come back again for another...
Because there's no page numbers.
That was one of my questions.
Well, since we're this far along in year one.
It specifically said that the board has the authority to give up to a one-year extension, and they can give...
A second.
Additional one-year extensions if appropriate.
So why don't you do, do a one-year and a one-year at one time?
Yeah, that's, that's an option, if it's feasible to do that.
Thank you.
The page three, one...
There's no page numbers in the subdivision regulations? So...
May I request?
Homework?
Yes.
Is there a section or any reference point?
We are, yeah.
It seems a little odd, because the applicant requested a two-year period, but we can only grant a one-year.
No, um, is that what it said?
Yes, this is, applicant may request an extension of, oh, of the two-year period, sorry, not of...
Yeah, it was poorly written.
More than one extension may be granted. Can we grant two? Can we grant an extension simultaneously? I don't know what's...
Well, we could make a determination that's a more...
Administrative extension? I don't know.
This is a minor modification.
Well, if we specify the dates of each extension, you know, grant a one-year extension.
I don't know, I've never...
You know, for the period eight, 15, 16 through eight, 14, 17, and followed by a subsequent one-year extension.
Doesn't say you have to come back with a request.
Yeah, I would make a verbal request if that would assist the board.
Well, well, clearly, it doesn't sound like you're going to be done with them one year because of other issues.
We will not.
Right, and so you'd just be coming for the board requesting the same thing again.
Correct.
So just from a efficiency standpoint, I don't, the board's okay with granting...
Yeah, I don't have any objections to...
Two, two one-year extensions.
Continuing the project and continuing the process, you know?
Thank you.
Okay.
It would make sense to do a one-year extension and wait and come back a second time?
And come back a second, that's what you're saying, okay.
I think it would, if, if, I mean...
Which would be expiring in August of this year, then, right? If I'm reading that right. What are the correct dates? It expired on...
August of last year.
August of last year. See, that's the problem. It's not real, I mean, it's one year from the time it expired, but it's not a one-year time period left to do it.
Yeah, right, it'd be a one-year from August of 2016 through August of 2017.
Right.
You know, so they've got four months.
Yeah.
At which point...
So come back...
Come back, and then you'll see the progress.
Yeah.
With NSTAR, you'll get plans and everything, and you'll know where the turtles are and...
Okay, well, you came for the one year, so we can sew...
I'll make a motion to extend, grant a one-year extension from August 15, 2016, expiring August 14, 2017, to continue the project.
Motion second. I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jurassic?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I will also vote yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, the second, second...
One more.
The second one was the utilities. So this would be to, which, which would be to allow the overhead utilities, not the underground.
Can we specify that they need to be all on one side?
Yeah, and NSTAR will design however NSTAR wants to design it.
Oftentimes, too, they crisscross to minimize tree cutting.
Okay, but are there trees through here? I thought this, I remember this is more of an open field.
In the, in the approval, there's a series of trees that we're still planting.
To be planted, but are there trees there now?
Uh, no, this is one or two trees that probably won't survive the experience though.
Right. Okay, so I, the board, I think, would like to see them all on one side, cleaner looking. So...
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're happy to go to them with that. I can tell you, from 50 different projects, they typically do what's in their best interest from engineering and layout and whatever the, there's a lot of different circumstances. So I can't even guess as to what they, we can let them know that's the preference of the board.
Okay. So we need any discussion about this?
No.
All right.
No, it's fine.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion when we amend condition 13 for Mary Jo Estates, so that we can allow above-ground utilities.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll second that. Okay, I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jurassic?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
And Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I will also...
Thank you very much.
Oh, this is back?
Yeah.
Of course, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a...
Second, one-year extensions, there's no need for them to...
Here we have a public hearing, next continued for Norton Self-Storage Special Permit, Section 4.5 Use Regulation, and modifications to the previously issued permit, and site plan for 60,000 square foot self-storage facility.
If I might, before the applicant speaks, can I just review?
Sure.
If you see under tab one of your binders, there is a review from the Department of Planning and Economic Development on this project, and there are new attachments that you will notice. There are four new attachments, a revised landscape plan and swale detail, a letter from Hayes, the architect, with an ASBilt dated 4/7, a draft surety agreement, and a letter from myself regarding the landscape that was a discussion we had with the applicant. There is background outlined here with a detailed history of the project, and if you go to pages two on, there is a general discussion of waivers necessary to grant the project, and issues and comments on each of the potential modification requests. There is a lot of material here, so I'm available to answer any questions.
Do you want to start with the landscape plan? First item, and so at our last meeting, we had requested some additional plantings, evergreen plantings. Tabitha had comments and made recommendations, so it appears that you have accommodated, or some of the additional pine trees and evergreen material?
Yes, for the record, Craig Larson from Norton Self-Storage. We did take this, Ms. Harkins' suggestions. We did modify our landscape plan. We added white pine trees in the locations that she suggested. We're removing rososas and replacing those also. We did give her a more detailed plan on the rain guard, and also on the vegetated swales. I do have the engineer here available tonight, if there's any technical questions regarding our calculations regarding the vegetated swales. We do have a dollar amount from the landscape contractor. I do have a list of what is installed, what's left to be installed. Obviously, the new suggested items need to be installed, you know, planted and whatnot, but I do have that available.
Okay.
Our estimate that we have from our landscape contractor, it'd be about $7,500 to finish the proposed landscape plan that you have here tonight.
That is attached to the surety, draft surety letter.
So that's, that's the amount of work to be done?
Yes.
Over and above what's already been done?
Correct.
Correct?
The questions or comments on the landscape plan?
Oh, on the, the swales behind Building A and...
Building E.
And Building B. Just to let the board know that I went and looked at the properties during those torrential rains last week, and the rain coming off the roof was, you know, a fair amount going into the swales, and absolutely no puddling, except a little bit at the back of Building A, just where those playground equipment is, but it was minor. So these drainage swales seem to be working fairly well, because there was a lot of water coming down.
The swales haven't been done yet, though, right?
They've been, they've been, we need to beef them up a little bit, but yes, they were, I don't want to get in the problem I had last time about telling you what percentage, but there was some work done on the swales. There is just going to be some, we have a more detailed item here, and we're going to do some more work on the swales. I think they basically, in agreement, they need to be widened to the five-foot. I think they're only at best three and a half, four feet at this time. But I do have, haven't been here in a torrential downpour, but I've been on the property over the last year and a half, and haven't had any issues with the neighbors or any other problems on the property as far as drainage. On the front of the building, on the roadside, I just want to let you know that there is no drainage on that road. So if you see, there is a little bit of washout on two sections already out there, but it's really from the road, not from our property. My understanding is, and you might know better than me, that the road is going to, isn't slated to be reconstructed. That was one of the reasons why we moved the water line onto the other side, to our side of the property, and I believe it's slated to be, at the time it gets repaired, hopefully they'll put drainage in. But we're not draining property, water onto the road. It's kind of the other way around.
If I might, the planning board and beta group, the peer review for this project, did request a supplemental drainage analysis for this project?
For?
To see if the capacity of the revised drainage system, as you're showing...
I do have the engineer here now. He could speak to that, to our swales you're talking about, right? On the side of the buildings?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, he could answer any questions you have, or do a presentation, or whatever you would like to do.
Up to the board.
Well, we went, we basically were looking for documentation, that's...
He did present, sent a letter that we did present this week.
The letter was taken away from me.
Uh-huh.
You don't have a letter?
You gave me a letter, and then you took it away from me, so...
No, I didn't, I don't think so, but I can, I don't think I took anything away, but...
We had a discussion, and you said that you would get more information.
All right, I apologize, meaning the diagram.
What do I know? Just a one-page letter, okay. Were there calculations attached?
He showed me some Manning's equation calculations, typical Manning's equation, the drainage.
Okay, well, we don't have, you don't have calculations?
No.
Okay. You said your engineer is here?
Yes, would you like to speak to him, Ralph? Can you speak, come up here and speak to the...
Come on up here.
I haven't seen you for a while, Ralph.
Yeah, a long time.
They want to speak to your calculations on the drainage swales.
Yeah, we calculated the drainage south of A and north of A of a 100-year storm, and we provided the swell.
A second.
Actually, the swell shape was given to me, but I calculated the flow of the swell, and on the third page, I have the formula I used, and was, how much water the, how much water the swell will carry, so...
There are no calculations attached to this letter, so...
We can give it to you right now.
Oh.
Oh, that's the agenda. We have this, and then this is a...
That's, that's the planning plan?
Yes.
All right, so we had asked for calculations. Mr. Beatty observed it during a rainstorm, so I guess that there, where does the one, board want to go with this? Are they satisfied that...
Based on my observations, if they went to the five-foot swell, the five-foot...
That will slow the water down.
Well, slope.
Yeah.
That would solve whatever puddling is there, certainly.
That'd be on both, either sides of those buildings, right? One on...
There was only puddling behind Building A at the back of the property, where the Abada's playground is.
I just want to note, too, to make an addition, is that we are asking for, we have had an agreement for a surety bond, for a cash bond, to complete the landscape project, and the swales are part of this landscape project, and that the deposit that we would leave with the town would cover these swales.
Okay. And was that included in the amount that you mentioned earlier?
Yes.
The swell work as well?
Yes. But the guarantee, but the reason for the surety was to make sure that the landscape plan works as proposed, and that the, these swales are part of that landscape plan. They're not separate.
And the surety is being proposed as cash?
So... In the draft, there is no actual final amount. He has presented to me 7,500 as a...
But is it cash surety? Are we talking about cash surety?
We can do cash surety, yes.
Good, because if that's for a small amount, I would go doing cash surety.
Yeah. On the only other, the cash surety, and if we could do 18 months or two-year time on it, that'd be fine with us.
I'd prefer a two-year, that way you have another growing season if something's not surviving.
The amount was 7,500 each?
Well, that's what it's cost, that's, that's what we're asking. We would defer to the board.
So once the swell's done, we're going to have somebody go out there and inspect it?
Correct. Yeah, as well as the landscaping. It would be a condition of approval.
And that's, the grass is going to be, it's going to be a rain garden mix? Is that what the...
That's just in the front of the building?
Yeah.
Separate from those swales.
So the swell is the...
Sides of the buildings.
Yeah, I know. That's the low maintenance turf mix.
It says, it says the rain garden seed mix hand spread in the cross-section here.
We did submit it earlier, which I think I have a copy here, of what those swales will be constructed of, as far as grass seeds and whatnot.
Earlier when?
I dropped it, right in the packet that I dropped on February 28.
February 28?
Yeah, and it was also, it's been...
That was, yeah, oh, the other seed mix, there wasn't, there wasn't.
It's from the ECR letter.
Low maintenance turf mix?
Yeah, but it's also...
On the letter from our ECR, dated last year, I gave out last time. You have this whole packet out there?
Yep, I have it.
And I think the board members have it, and there's the rain garden mix.
Right.
Okay, I do have it.
I do have a...
You want to mow the swell, so you, you want the, you want the low maintenance turf mix for the swell?
I do have a large landscape plan, if anybody wants to look at the larger scale of this presentation.
So what is the board's opinion? Are we satisfied that this answers the questions we had last time?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it would appear that they've at least, yeah, have addressed all the items that were suggested and recommended last week. Appreciate the additions to the landscaping, based on Tabitha's recommendations. Expanding the swell certainly sounds like a, a good plan. I haven't seen the site during a rainstorm, so I'll certainly take Ed's observations and opinion on that.
Okay, and then with regards to surety?
What portion of the seventy-five hundred is these swales? It sounds like if they're three feet, you're basically doubling the size.
It's probably half of it.
Half of it?
Yeah. We are going to, some of this, we're taking some, the Rosa goes is out, put some others in, the white pines are not very expensive items.
I'm not worried about the landscape, I'm worried about the swell.
Right.
I mean, they're going to hydroseed it.
Yes, we're going to re-hydroseed the whole property again.
Yeah.
That's just, that was planned regardless. We do have, which is different than the previous landscape plan, we do have irrigation on the front portion of this property, which I think is a positive.
Swales aren't irrigated?
No.
I'm just thinking, if you expand them and add topsoil to them, and then hydroseed them, they're going to be prone to washout. When are you planning on doing the work?
We'll do it, after the twenty-day appeal period runs. We could actually do it ahead of time. It is spring now, it was warm today. We were out there, actually, we did some cleanup this week already on the site. The tree that was out of the ground is now gone, some of the other things are done. We're on the property daily now. So we did go in and do some work to kind of clean it up since the last, literally in the last meeting. I'm proposing seventy-five hundred dollars, that is the cost of it. Wouldn't, certainly wouldn't be opposed to one and a half times, or something along those lines.
Let's take it ten, that's an even number.
I'd be comfortable with ten, yeah. I mean, that seems like a lot of work for seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah. Ten gives a little buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You may have to see twice.
They have to do it twice.
Yep.
So surety, the amount of ten?
I'm happy with ten.
We should take a vote on the, on the surety amount, so...
The motion is to accept the surety to cover the anticipated landscaping and swell work.
Right.
And this security agreement, Mr. Larson, you've seen that, I assume?
Yes, it's, it's a, I wouldn't say boilerplate, but it's pretty cut and dry, and it's, I think it goes to what we agree to.
Right, and the surety being in the form of cash.
Right. Pursuant to the surety agreement that somewhere, somebody is here somewhere.
And I'm comfortable with the town in Orton.
So the motion is to allow surety with remaining landscaping and swell work in the amount of ten thousand dollars cash, per the surety agreement, to be signed with the town.
Second.
Take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jurcik?
Yes.
Mr. Frennades?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I will also vote yes. All right. Those issues, what else do we have here?
There's a couple of potential waivers for site plan approval and landscaping that we'd have to do, I think.
Waivers listed?
They didn't request them specifically.
Right. We should have the lighting. Talk about that first.
Yeah.
We had talked about an updated...
Yeah, I have obviously failed on the lighting. I cannot get a revised lighting plan done by this time for this meeting. That's something that's not that easy to get, usually get it from the manufacturers. I would allow it to stay as, as the lighting plan that is approved. It's just not totally constructed at this time. If we can do it at an amended plan, I could submit an amended plan. I was told I can get one in about a week and a half or two weeks, and then do with that administratively, if that's possible. Or I will, at this time, construct the plan as, as approved.
Right, so you are proposing less lights than originally proposed?
Yes.
I personally am not opposed to that, so I guess the question was just getting the documentation behind it, so...
I have no problem, I can do a layman's thing, but I think that's not what we're looking for here.
So we could administratively, so, so we... We probably should take a vote on modifying the plan, too.
I will submit a...
Do we have a copy of the plan?
We did, it's shown, it's shown on the ASBILs.
Yeah, the ASBIL is, the packet from last meeting was actually behind the packet from this meeting.
Right.
Got it.
With a clip on it.
The lights that are constructed today are on that ASBIL, yes. There are literally just two.
There are two lights in front of the parking area, one on either side of the sign, and then the lighting on the buildings themselves.
Building is all done and lit up. What we're, a limit...
Wall pack, wall mount units along all sides of the buildings?
All sides.
Right, or we could just take a vote on the whole modified plan, instead of each thing differently?
That's what I propose, or wish.
But there would, there would be a condition to provide the, the photometric plan administratively afterwards.
Okay.
So let's, let's see what else we have here.
So then landscaping. The plan that was submitted has not been stamped, so they'd need a waiver on that.
Or from a landscape contractor.
Or an engineer or anybody.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I think it's just a matter of the conditions.
The architectural conditions, we had no discussion with that.
We haven't discussed it, the building inspector and I spoke, the architect's been in touch with the building inspector. He'd have to do, and his comments are included in here. Where is it? Issues comments, other on page three, number two. The letter the architect's been... The architect has submitted a new letter with how he's going to meet that, he's discussed it with the building inspector, the building inspector will need to go out and, per his comments on page four, it's kind of a lengthy review, sorry. He wouldn't do a temporary occupancy permit, but would have to go out and do a final site inspection before full occupancy permit.
Can you tell us about that next comment, per the follow-up conversation on the 411?
Somehow he got floor plans that were submitted to his department that depicted an accessory apartment, and he said he would not entertain granting that, it's not in the, it's not allowed.
I can address that, if you, we have, when I showed up here, there, as you probably already know, there, there were a mega amount of plans made on this property. And that office, if, I don't know if you're aware of it, but the foundation was ripped down twice, and so we got the one we got now. So the designs were floating all over the place. We did address that, the apartment with staff way back a year and a half ago, and I think in an informal meeting, we talked to the board about the apartment. At this time, we were not proposing any apartment. We would like to hopefully have an amendment or a zoning change at some point to do an accessory apartment in this industrial area. And that's through the town's, you know, town meeting method.
That would be, so right now, there's no, there's no allowance for, or zoning does not...
Well, it's, it's in their original permit that, and the zoning in the industrial zone specifically says no residential, period. It's pretty cut and dry. We did bring it up, I think that's how come there's some plans floating around, but we're not submitting to this board any plans whatsoever that have any kind of apartment on them.
Finished?
No, no, matter of fact, the only thing that, it's, it's cold storage up there, it's not heated, there's no insulation up there. The only thing that is probably done is that we do have some plumbing pipes that we weren't even allowed to bring out, stub out, they're in the physical walls now. And that's only because, just redo what I explained, I think, to this board before, and in an informal meeting, is that these projects, we have a number of these self-storage units, and they do work way better with an onsite residential manager. It's safer, too. At this point, we're going to have a manager come in in the morning and leave at night. It is locked down, but it is literally, you know, locked down. It's much safer to have somebody that, living onsite, and still be locked down, let's say, but at least the bad people will know somebody's living there.
But there's nothing we can do at this stage?
No, and I'm not asking for, yeah. I'm going to deal with it through, at best, through a town meeting.
You'd have to put a, make a request for it.
You know, Mike, in general, as you probably already know, this probably shouldn't be, in today's world, it wouldn't be zoned industrial, it would be more of a commercial type of use, because of the residential properties right across the street. I mean, I think it was maybe done back in the fifties, when they did this industrial.
The seventies, we did not yet, that's probably almost done.
Right. But anyway, we're, I dare say, if you go through all these files, and if you go to the building department, you might come across something, but we'd like to expunge those as best we can. We're not proposing anything, and anything that we give you has nothing to do with an apartment.
Okay, so in terms of, that could be conditioned, just to reiterate that?
Yeah.
The other condition was on the ADA access, which I believe...
Are you going to...
The applicant will need to work out with the building inspector.
Apologies. Just so we get to the, you're not going to put anything in our permit that has negative residential, right? You're just, you're going to leave it alone and let the zoning handle it, right?
That'll be fine.
The only reason I'm saying that, because in the future, if we, because we do have a special permit, and the special permit will control this property at all times, even if you rezone this thing for amusing parks, it, the special permit will control this property. And if it says specifically no residential, I think it might have a problem or something like, I don't want to, so if we just leave it mute and follow the zoning?
Right, the building inspector, the zoning enforcement inspector, so...
I'm just looking, you know, trying to clean up the title, too, here.
Thank you, hopefully, for the future.
Yeah.
All right, were there any other outstanding issues? We know we have some waivers we need to discuss, but the only waiver is the...
There's no outstanding issues that I could speak to.
All right, so the only waiver is the landscape plan signed by a landscape architect?
Yes, we're asking for that, and I can have a registered land surveyor or...
I think we did it for the last...
We did stamp it.
The last change, but not this one, so probably, just to, just to make sure it's clear. So the applicant has a request to waive the signing of the landscape plan by a landscape architecture, which the board has typically waived in the past.
I think we've already done it once.
And I just...
And we've done it once, okay, so we have a motion for that, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jurcik?
Yes.
Mr. Frennades?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I will also vote yes.
I just want to reask about our operating hours, I want to make sure that we, in our written presentation, we did six to nine, I think we want to, I verbally agreed to go from the seven to eight, and I just want to make sure, because it wasn't, I didn't write that down, so I just want to make sure that that is in there, or deleted from our presentation, and just go with the underlying permit.
I think that would, that would be a condition.
Yeah.
That would be a condition of the special permit.
Yeah.
So what are we agreeing to?
Operating hours is seven AM to eight PM?
The original permit.
Original what, which is in the original permit, just to reiterate that. The other modification, we, we talked about, I mean, the original permit had changes, had specific architectural features. Project is now different, I don't hear any, I mean, to me, the project, the buildings themselves look nice, we know the abutis have spoken and said they're, they're comfortable with how it looks. So I think in terms of a, it's a vote, but what do we have that references the current design? We have...
I did have that written response that I gave to, I got to have another copy.
In his initial application, the modifications requested, there is descriptions of the cupolas, the shingles, the various architectural elements that they're requesting condition.
All right, so the request is for a modification to the special permit, and also to the site plan, correct?
We want to accept the ASBIL as the site plan.
The good part is, the buildings are in the right spot.
That's a good thing.
Got that right.
Well, I know, but that would have been a biggie.
It only worked three times.
Yeah.
I do have a neighbor here, if you want to have her speak.
She's not shy.
Right, exactly. All right, so we have a modification to the special permit, which I believe we have to vote on those plans twice, so, and then the modification would also include the revised architectural drawings, as well as the revised landscape plan.
There's no architectural drawings.
There are, there are sketches at the building department, that was part of the deal, is that the plan at the building department doesn't look like the plan that you approved here.
Right, so this...
But I do have this written response that it could actually be easier, I think, instead of saying, is you could do this if you wanted to, I guess.
We just want, we need to reference something for the record as to what we've approved, so we have a, we have an ASBIL, we have a landscape plan we could define for the architecture, we need to have a reference, so...
If you look at the plans that are on file at the building inspector's office, they do reference pretty, I would say, what's out there, and if they're not, I almost have to speak, Steve Heath is here, as far as, he's looked at those plans more than I have in more detail. I know the, the large building is, that plan is perfectly the same, what is out there on the ground is what at the building department. The office is definitely, what is out there today is at the building department, and I believe the other ones...
We have this entire.
Yeah, we just need a reference, because that's part of the problem with this project, where you, we need...
No, I understand.
We need to approve something that's referenceable.
Since I haven't been here through the entire project, in discussions with Brian, what I've done, and it's not a hundred percent complete, but, because we're still changing things a little bit, but I put together some binders that basically have every relevant document I could find that had anything to do with this project. We all went through the files that were available, starting in two thousand and six, and put them all together, and, you know, we've been editing things as, you know, we've been completing and developing things. So my intent is to make this available to anybody who wants it, and if you want to reference the drawings that are in here, there are drawings of that office building in here. They're not going to change, I could submit them to...
We need a specific document.
I would prefer we go to this, and reference this as a method, do you have copies of this that I gave out, and just write memo or date it?
It could be added, in terms of writing up an order of conditions, you can add all these references to it, so we just want to make sure we have a reference.
I do have these here.
In the order of conditions.
That I presented to the board.
Am I crazy? What's the document we're referencing?
That and the building plans with the building inspector.
But he just said the plans of the building inspector need to be expunged.
No, no, no.
No.
The ones that show the apartment are going to be expunged, but there's no apartment shown on the documents that I'm going to be turning in with my certification.
So am I referencing this entire binder?
Pardon me? Well, no, I was going to give you...
For you, for planning, I would prefer you go by this letter that I presented.
Plus the plans that are being submitted by your architect.
He's not...
The letter submitted, which date?
I think I submitted this on that February twenty-eighth.
The original application letter?
No, because we redid that, because we wanted to know what was done, why it was done.
Why don't you provide a, I'd like to take a look, what do you have in your hands?
I have it, it's this.
And I did give this out in the middle of form to all the members.
What are you referring to?
This is submitted on March seventh, at the meeting.
I think what you're looking for, though, is just the original dated plans, right?
Well, we, we, we could reference the ASBIL, we could reference the landscape plan, we need to reference something for the, the buildings themselves, so...
Well, that's, that's nothing wrong with that, that's, we're not modifying... Well, that's, that's, that's nothing wrong with that, that's, we're not modifying.
For the facade, some of the elevation.
Oh, so he, I, he's, it's, it's referenced by description.
Yes, that's what I said, we don't have any drawings of them.
Yeah, I think that's...
Okay, I just, I wanted to be clear, but there's no drawings.
Yeah, we typically don't get, we may get a sketch of a, of a, of a elevation, we typically don't get building plans per se, as the planning board.
I think that's what they're referring to.
No, but a sketch of an elevation is a drawing, I just was asking if there's a drawing.
I did go through the entire permits, and we did go through the datas, and data looked at it, I looked at it, and went bullet by bullet by bullet, what I approved, what was out there.
For conditions, you can change the condition.
And the reason why.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, we can do it that way, okay, I just, we just need some way to define what the buildings we were, were accepting, so I think this would probably work.
I'm comfortable with what we wrote up.
Okay.
Right, but this has, as a request, the 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
But we'll, we'll condition our...
Right, so I...
...related to that.
And my point is, we don't want to reference this wholesale.
Just for the design, or these, these, this comes into as a condition. So the condition is, shingles shall be modified to, you know, you can use the text in here to put into the order of conditions, it could be written in as...
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, okay. All right, so, anything else on this?
The only, the only concern I have, and I understand Mr. Larson's reticence to accept a restriction on an accessory apartment, but I'd like to have language on, just, that, that acknowledges the fact, in the special permit modification, that there shall be no accessory apartment, unless and until such time as zoning may hereafter change...
To allow such a use.
To allow such a use, whereupon whatever requirements are needed at that time, in other words, if it gets changed with a special permit, then they come back to the special permit.
Love to come back for a special permit.
I, I don't want to either, I don't want to...
Leave it silent?
I don't want to leave it silent, I don't want to preclude Mr. Larson from pursuing that, but by the same token, I don't want to put it in motion by virtue of this, so if there's going to be a special permit required going forward...
They would have to come before the board again for a special permit.
And that's a long-winded explanation, I can try to formulate a...
Well, I think the intent, my intent of it would be, and you can look at other, if you put in, just blanket, no residential, right?
Yeah, no, I don't think that's the answer.
I'm not trying to do that, but I'm troubled by the fact that, you know, there are apparently plans on file with the town agency that shows an accessory apartment, and I don't want anyone to infer.
We send it in and replace.
So I think somewhere along the line of what he's saying, I agree with what he's saying.
So that could be a condition.
As long as, because I think, I think if they do a zoning change in this town, they'll actually bring it, give, bring it back to, we'd have to come back, we got, they'll have a board that will control that zoning change in the industrial area, and saying that accessory apartments are allowable per the agreement with the planning board, or something like that, I'm assuming that's how it'll be written, that's how it's written.
It could be another special apartment.
That's how it's usually written up in other, they don't just blatantly say...
You allow it.
We allow it, so I dare say that if the staff in the town agrees on a zoning change, they'll have some kind of those languages in there.
So that, that could be a condition.
Yeah.
So the conditions we, we've talked about are the, the time for operation, the need for surety, the provision of the lighting plans, and then the architectural changes would be written in as a, correct? Anything else?
And the accessory apartment.
And the accessory, right, the accessory apartment issue, which would be only allowed should zoning change.
Allowed.
Allowed, if zoning is...
So allows.
Change. So we have, and we had, we did the vote on the waiver, so we would need a, there's two votes on this, one for a site plan, and one for a special permit modification. So the vote on the site plan is to approve the as-built plan of, what's it on here?
It's actually the second.
Second page here, last time. So according to as-built plan dated 1/2016, no, dated 1/2016, signed March...
I have the...
Landscape plan?
Dated January 25th, and revised...
Revised March 9th, okay.
March 9th.
R.I.M.
March 9th, 2017.
So move?
Move to approve the as-built drawings as presented, dated January 25th, and approve March 9th.
So the vote is actually to move the site plan modification to include...
Move the site plan modification.
Okay.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All right, I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jurzick?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I'll also vote yes. Okay, the second vote is on a modification of special permit, 438, subject to the modifications we've, uh, the conditions we've discussed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, you for the discussion? I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jurzick?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I'll also vote yes. Okay. So you'd have to write up the...
Yeah, I'm just making sure I got everything, okay.
Write up the, yeah.
Thank you.
Decisions. Okay, thank you, good luck, we look forward to having it finished, as the neighbors are also. All right, we do have a continuation next for a public hearing for special permit 469, zero East Hodges Street, for a shared drive.
And you'll find that under tab two, same kind of thing as the last one, I put the most recent review and attachments on top, and then the last meeting's, flip to the back.
Okay, do you want to do a...
Sure.
...update from your report? I think that's helpful.
So in the department review number three dated today, there's two attachments, an email from Armory Engineers, and number two is a letter supplementary drainage report, I think the copying might have gotten a little screwed up on that, sorry. The background is that it's located on East Hodges Street, we're talking about approximately five acres, the plan set is titled Site Permitting Plans of XXX at East Hodges Street. We're proposing to construct a common driveway and associated drainage infrastructure approximately 980 feet in length, which is exceeding the 500-foot standard and would require a waiver. There's no water main on East Hodges, therefore they're proposing deep wells, we discussed this last time, and skipping to page two and issues, the weight, the, one waiver that would be needed on this would be a waiver to section 2.2, common driveway. Most of the other issues have been cleared up, and I'll have the applicant speak on their behalf, you can see that on page two and three, so we would request that we vote to approve or deny it with a waiver, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so the issue we had last time was, we were looking at, was the drainage and sort of documentation of how much potential increase, that's the big issue, so, you...
Okay. Good evening, Shay Oats with Conoco Engineers and Scientists, so, what we spent most of the past week looking at was, we decided, last meeting we talked a lot about a watershed analysis to analyze the culvert and the expenses, you know, that would be incurred because of that, so what we did was, we did a brief, quick watershed analysis with just given information, so what we did was, we took a look at the entire area that was contributory towards the existing culvert on East Hodges Street, and basically what we did was, we took areas, flow paths, we used aerial images, USGS maps for topography, we assumed quarter-acre lots, which give you a curve number with a certain amount of impervious areas, so it's basically a holistic view, instead of going out and actually surveying almost 600 acres. The total watershed area that contributes to that culvert is 581.7 acres, and then we did a time of concentration line, we made some general assumptions, so if there are culverts within this watershed area, we haven't surveyed those, so we don't know that they're constricting any flows, so we assume that it was a free-flowing situation, which is conservative, because if you have stuff constricting us, that's gonna make, that's gonna hold back our water and make that culvert seem like it works a little bit better than it does. We modeled all the wetlands as a, with a curve number of 78, which is another conservative number, and then, as I mentioned, we use quarter-acre lots, we use as the average developed area outside of wooded areas or large grass areas, so we broke them down. What we submitted with our findings, actually the second page of that just gives you a watershed peak rate of runoff and total volume comparison, so when you're looking at this almost 600 acres, there's no increase in our flow or volumes, basically, we increased the impervious areas over that watershed by about 0.18%, or approximately one acre out of the 582 acres, that's the net change in the watershed area that you would analyze. Then we attached a couple of figures, this figure, the first figure that was attached shows your soils, because those obviously contribute to your curve number, and it shows our flow paths, and then the second one just gives you an overall aerial view with the time of concentration, it shows that this 581 acres, here's our proposed driveway here to the north of, to the north, we go about 3,000 feet to the east, all the way south to Tremont Street, and then west to the existing power lines, that gives you an idea, if you're familiar with the area, of just how big that watershed area is.
I see that.
You can, yeah.
So ours are just black and white, so...
Black and white, and they're hard to read.
This is the one that show the soils that were broken down, and it also has GIS wetland areas on there, so that's how we determined it. So normally, when you were doing, gonna do a really defined and definitive watershed analysis, you'd have to somehow survey all this, all this area, which, you know, that's why it's quite an undertaking, quite expensive, so, so we use the information that was available, and GIS and the USGS topography maps are widely accepted methods to do this type of analysis, so, then we sent this information over to Tabitha, into the peer review engineer, and he got back to us, all with an email today, saying that he took a look at it, he agrees, we're taking a much larger view of it, so therefore, you expect a little bit less changes than, because you're not focused in on that 500 feet of driveway that we spoke about last time, now that 500 feet over 581 acres, it's not, you know, gonna have that much of an impact. I believe in his email, and Tabitha can reiterate this, he basically said, although it's not improving any conditions, obviously, at that culvert, it's also not detrimental to the existing conditions on the site, so, that's what we've kind of been working on for the last week.
So I do have the, I do have, we do have an email from Pat Brennan, which, which essentially said, Mr. Oats has said.
And I will just make one more note, that while these are all considered de minimis flooding impacts, there are still abutter concerns that are included in your packets.
Right.
I have a question about the email. Who's Pat Brennan, and what's his...
Pat Brennan was, is our consulting engineer, the one that was here last time?
Okay.
So he reviewed, he reviewed their drainage, watershed analysis on behalf of the board.
So he's a consultant, or he isn't, he isn't...
He works for us.
He works for us.
Yeah, he's our town, the town of Norton's consulting engineer, so we brought him in for peer review of the applicant's engineering calculations. So that's that issue, and you have, you know, concerns over, we, we know that there's a problem today. No one's disputing that there's a drainage problem.
Does, does it state where the water comes from? I mean, where is the majority of the water coming from? Is it coming from the Norton side, is it coming...
There's a water, is the watershed line...
It's basically just 581 acres, we have breakdowns of it, I don't have a copy of those exact counts.
You have the outline of the water...
Yeah, he could, Matt, do you have a copy of that color?
Show the, no, the gentleman here?
Well, who's the...
No, I think he wants to see a map, probably more.
Do you have the watershed map?
It basically comes from wooded, wetland, wooded areas, wetland areas, and single-family residences.
It's, there's a plan right there.
Yeah, yeah, but here's, here's my question.
You have to come and speak at the, at the, just, can you state your name, please, again, for the record?
My question is, where's the water coming, I know it's, okay, so it's, this 581 acres is, I don't know, 50% of it coming from the Norton side, 50% coming from the Taunton side, is it coming from the back, from the front? If you put in the driveway, how is it gonna impact the flow if you don't know where the water's coming from? I mean, this was a partial watershed, it wasn't a complete, we're using...
No, I believe that...
No, this is a...
It's all the, the area draining to that one culvert, correct?
This is the complete watershed, this is everything that drains to this culvert, and it basically starts down here, on the most southern tip of the watershed on Tremont Street, we don't have the town line on here, so I don't have a percentage, and then it flows this blue line, this is the time of concentration line, so that's one of the flow paths, but also you have these developed areas to the south, that eventually, whether they get there through wetlands connections, or just general topography, those areas all find their own way to that culvert, so every...
So basically, everything's going there.
Right.
But now, from the path, and again, what my, what my question is, is you're gonna be putting in a driveway.
Right.
So if you put in a driveway, now the water isn't gonna be flowing like it is now, it's not gonna have, you know, 580 feet of non-restricted access to all of this land.
No, it, it actually will, because in our driveway, in our proposal on that sheet down there, we have a culvert, a crossing, that's sized to accommodate the proper storms and flows that occur during the major events.
So even with, even with all that water that was in from that small storm, so there's not gonna be any impact, and from all this water that's coming in, it's not gonna overtake what you plan on putting in now?
No, it's not gonna constrict any flows, and it's not gonna impact the watershed, that's what we took, we took a larger view of it. So from an entire watershed perspective, there won't be any increases in flow, and our driveway has to have that stream crossing, because you can't inhibit the natural flow, so.
But didn't, didn't you say you did a quick watershed, you didn't do a complete analysis, you used basic numbers?
No, a complete analysis would be to survey this entire 600 acres with a, with a surveyor.
So you know what's going on.
Right, but you, based on today's aerial maps and GIS and topography, it's, they're pretty close. If you surveyed the 600 acres, I highly doubt that anything would change. Whatever changed pre would change post, basically, like if we went out there and we surveyed three or four culverts that restricted flow, that's not gonna cha, change your post-analysis, because it's all upstream. So I could say that half of that 500 acres is paved, well, it's paved today, and it's paved tomorrow, so the numbers are gonna remain, they're just gonna get higher, we'll have a higher volume, higher CFS, that's all.
Yeah, and like, there was a, earlier in this meeting, they're proposing putting in subdivision right here, is that gonna impact this watershed?
That's up to them to, to show that, not us.
But it's gonna, it's gonna impact this land, you said all this area goes this way.
Right, this is showing right now, existing roadway system and everything else, so if they put in a subdivision, they have to meet the stormwater standards, which should say nothing can leave their discharge point at a higher rate or volume. So they'll have to match whatever's there today, they'll probably have some detention structures and stuff like that in order to do that.
Yeah, it's just, the past couple of years, we've had dry years, they haven't been really heavy wat, we haven't had annual rainfall in a while, we've been in a drought for a few years. How accurate, I mean, again, you guys are going by something, I, I want to make sure this is accurate, I live here.
Well, that's, that's why we asked our, our engineer who works for us to take a look at it, do a peer review, the other one is that they still have to go through, they have, this still has a lot of wetlands permitting to do, and wetlands are defined by combination of plants and soil, not necessarily visually where you see water at that time, but by the plants and soils that grow into those conditions.
Right, I mean, this is, this is like one of the things that I'm questioning, because again, you know, they have four lots, but on those lots, only one is a buildable lot that it's being taxed, I mean, the smallest lot is being taxed at $100,000, the other lots, 13,000, 14,000, 20,000, that's not a buildable lot, and I'm, and I'm curious why we're speaking of this like they are.
Well, I hope, I think the applicant is proposing that if they become buildable by building a common driveway, which would be put house on and approved.
You're, you're starting, yeah, but you're starting a step, they're not buildable now, why? Why are they not, why haven't they been built?
There's no determination, just because the assessors either assess it as buildable or non-buildable. That's a judgment call in terms of value. I mean, if they were nice, clean lots on the, on the edge of the road...
I wouldn't be here.
...it would be buildable. But, you know, this is, from an engineering standpoint, quite an undertaking, and a construction standpoint even more so, so it, it devalues this, these aren't four marketable lots as we speak.
Right. But they're being proposed as such to put in a driveway for them. That's...
Right, which would, it would be an... Which would change their ability to be built on.
Right, but that's, I'm stating that I don't think that should change with what's going on here. I, I don't, to me, I don't believe these numbers. I'm sorry. I, I see how much water comes in there, you know? It, it's just, I don't know. I, I just have a hard time.
We have also some of Butter's letters concerned about the well that's adjacent to your proposed driveway.
Okay.
And, I don't know if we, we have the...
I haven't seen that letter.
On page eight of the, my review, is an email from Anita Kenniston, sent on Monday, March 6th, prior to the...
Right, and they, they're the direct to Butter, the lot, the north, the lot of the north side.
Do we know where the...
So they are in Assessor's Lot, 36 Lot, 144.
Right, they're on the...
I haven't seen the letter or anything, so I don't really know.
But do they say, we don't know where their well is specifically.
So they're saying they have a well on their property, which is fine. There's no required setback distances from a driveway to a well. There's required setback distances to a septic system, but they could have a well right on our property line that, there's, it's still not, there's no rules or regulations regarding that, as far as I know.
There could be some, there are, could be requirements for salt application, that sort of, excess sodium in the well.
I'm sure if this gets through conservation, there'll be some pretty good restrictions regarding salt applications.
Right here, it's this property right here. So there, it's right next to the butt of the driveway. Yeah. So their major concern is their water, their well, right?
Their, yes, they said the planned common driveway will be adjacent to our only source of water, a drainage well.
How close is that? Do we know?
We don't know.
To the driveway, to the well?
Well...
On scale, the driveway itself to the property line looks to be about 60 feet.
There is another email on page six that was submitted, and she says it's extremely close to the well. That's all that she said.
But I don't know where their well is.
All right, but the, but the road is at the closest...
I'm estimating somewhere around 60 feet.
60 feet. What's setback, what are setbacks from septic systems?
100.
100?
We're going to be quite a ways from that. Yeah, like I, like I said, I mean, it, the major concern would be roadway treatment applications such as salt. I doubt, I'm sure conservation will have a restriction on roadway treatments, snow removal and storage, all that type of stuff, because you're going to have a driveway going right through a wetland.
So there's a lot of sort of dependencies in this project. There's, the applicant needs to put in wells, so they have to have wells that have enough water. They also have to get a wetlands permit, which is, considering it's more than 5,000 square feet, then you have a variance, correct?
Yeah.
Right, no, I don't do wetlands, but I'm just asking, because I believe 5,000 square feet was the...
Well, 10,000 square feet will trigger an Army Corps permit, so...
Right, but under Mass state wetlands, because our, our conservation agent indicated that this is typically twice what is typically approved. So I...
Right.
My understanding was that more than 5,000 square feet requires a variance from DEP.
I'm not sure if it's a variance from DEP or not, but there's replication required. I mean, it's, that's going to have to be permitted, obviously, so... But we'll be submitting a notice of intent as a limited project, which does get you some leeway, so you're normally allowed to fill up to a certain amount. But if you have no alternative access to upland areas on your property, you're allowed to construct what you may need to get to those upland areas, so... But there's a whole series of events that need to occur during that submission of a limited project. You have to reach out to a Butters to see if you can work out better access with less disturbance to wetland areas and stuff like that, so, which we've started.
Right, and then any building would require a sprinkler system?
I'm looking for some free engineering education. It's something that I asked about last week, and maybe I'm just, but I look at where the houses are proposed, and the elevations are roughly 102 to 100 feet.
Yeah.
The wetlands, you know, go down to 86, so I'm assuming that, you know, tomorrow when it rains, water's going to go from that 102 or 100-foot elevation down into the 86.
Right.
I still want to know that .18 percent that you're going to add to the, the existing water flow. Why some of that water that is, again, it might just be a fruitless exercise, but to, to, to leave this project, sure to go forward, water neutral, why can't some of that water that's at the 102 elevation flowing off be contained at the 102 elevation? Why couldn't a whale be put in that area so that none of that water flows and contributes?
Because that's not, like I mentioned last week, that catchment area isn't what's tripping those numbers when you look at them in detail. It's the first 500 feet that disturb it that you can't accommodate and store anywhere. You have to store it on the land.
I understand, but at the end of the day, the culvert is taking water from this property, whether it's coming from 102-foot elevation or the 86 elevation.
Sure.
So I forget what the...
So it sounds like what you want to compensate for what's the first 500 feet, which you have no place to go.
You can't do anything about... You can't compensate one catchment area for another catchment area.
By doing more work on the other side.
That's hydraulically impossible. You can't do that.
Why? And this is, and again, I'm not arguing with you, I'm looking for...
Because one catchment area is going offsite, the other catchment area is going to the culvert, when you look at it from our site only.
Right, but where's the, where the houses are?
Can you pull the, put the plan up, which shows the topo?
Yeah.
First one?
All right, those, there's an elevation line there of 100 feet, which is pretty much along the fronts of those houses, correct?
Yeah.
Can you draw a drawing three?
Hmm?
Yeah, drawing three.
Drawing three, other way.
The other way, drawing number...
This is the grading plan, right here. This shows the contours and the...
I'm just looking at existing right now.
Okay.
Well, if that, if that answers my question, fine, but I'm just trying to understand, if I look at number, well, the elevations currently are at 100 feet.
Yeah, here's the 100 existing today.
Right, so if I drop a bucket of water there, some part of it's going to flow to the right.
Go this way and this way.
Right.
Yep.
Which is...
Anything that's going this way, we're capturing in here and then discharging. Anything that's going this way goes offsite into a series of wetlands, and then ultimately into the culvert. So when you take that out of your equation, when I'm just looking at my site, you can't treat it, I can't get any extra credit for it, it's going offsite. I can't take water that's going off my site, you know? I can't dry out the wetlands. So we have to match our pre and our post for, for each catchment area.
I'm sorry, when you say it's going offsite, it's going into the wetlands that ultimately goes to the culvert?
Right.
Talk to me like I'm...
If you're, if you're here, you're standing behind point, there's drainage going this way, offsite to the south.
When you say offsite...
Off our site.
It's going off your site, but is it making its way into that culvert?
Eventually.
And that's, that's what I'm asking. Why, again, whatever that gallonage is, I forget what...
Because if I hold what's going off here, I'm not analyzing the, the 400 acres over here, or if it's just like 30 acres till it gets to the culvert. We're not analyzing that, and I can't provide any control over there. But when it leaves, when I take the larger view of it, I'm already meeting it, because there's so little impact. But when we had, before, when we had larger numbers, that's because I'm only looking at my site. I'm not looking at other sites. You can only control what's on your site.
Right, but water, I'm sorry.
So then I think the question that I was asking is, why can't you control the water that's running south on your, on the site and hold it back there?
I could. It wouldn't affect any of my, it wouldn't affect my onsite numbers.
But I think the question is not so much your onsite numbers, but the culvert.
If I put a berm or a detention on here, water will stop flowing south of the site. Conservation would have some issues if we dry out a wetland. We have to mimic existing conditions, flows and rates, to the points that they're going to today. So if I have 100 CFS and 100 CFS, when I'm done, I got to have 100, I have, I have to have 100 coming out here and 100 coming out here. It would be a good trick, I agree, and it would help us meet those rates when we looked at the site, but we can't do it from a wetlands perspective.
Okay, that...
We also had, yeah, we also had a, we, when we did this, we've done about six iterations. We had bermed up along the wetlands, along the 100-foot, and we're like, let's hold the water back a little bit. But doing anything up in this catchment area, the good soil, the good area, it, it just doesn't do anything. Doesn't matter. And then we'd run into a problem permitting that with conservation.
So the problem is, just, just so I don't think I completely gone off my rocker.
Right, right.
No, this was the first site we've done in, since the stormwater management standards were revised in 2008. This is the first time we've ever had a site where we couldn't look at the site and just nail the pre and post, because normally you have a shopping center, you put a detention pond in, you put something under your parking lot, you just hold your water back. It's just that 500 feet up front, because I can't, we can't put a pond in the wetland. You know, we have such a long wetland crossing, and there's no place to hold it. We even talked about trying to put detention under the driveway, the whole length of the driveway, to try to hold that 500 feet, but then it becomes unstable, because it's a, it's going to be a filled driveway, so...
So the question really is, why are we here wasting our time with this if you're not going to get through conservation?
I don't think we're saying we're not going to get through conservation. It's just going to be a challenging project to permit with conservation because of the amount of wetland disturbance. But we have to try, otherwise this, you know, the lot's not developable as for single-family dwellings. It's develop, you can put a driveway and have a single-family home, like I mentioned, but, you know, they have four lots that they created years ago, and we're trying to stick with that plan.
You'd have similar wetland, well, the driveway might be a little narrow, but you'd still have to cross, you still have the wetland issue.
You're just not subject to the same scrutiny when you're just putting a single-family home, that's all, so...
Can I add a point to that, too? Attorney Matthew Plastner, that was the first hearing, that the conservation, it would be challenging, but it's certainly not any kind of flawed on conclusion. This wouldn't be approved, otherwise, why would we even be here? We need to start somewhere, and, and it is a point of clarification, I believe, on the point about flows going this way. We're not interfering with those existing flows, so it's more of just preserving those and not adding or subtracting, because I think one of the points was that if we stuck that, we could run into problems with conservation. So that's just an existing condition.
All right. I think we've heard any other questions or comments? Have we heard everything we're going to hear on this?
A question. So we're voting to allow the construction of a common driveway.
Say what?
We're voting...
That's what, well, they're requesting A of that, plus they also need a waiver on the length.
Right. So, good point that Pat makes about conservation. If we come back, we find out that 90% of this area is unbuildable. There are issues with wetlands and what have you. They still have the special permit to do some form of a driveway?
No, that, no, we don't. This is, this is a standalone application, I believe, for four, for a shared driveway to access four single-family dwellings.
However, in order to build it, they would have to get any other permit required. So if they don't get a conservation, permission, permit, then they can't...
We won't be able to pull a building permit. The hurdle will be, it's not where the wetlands are. We've locked in our wetlands. We did an ANRAD last fall, so the wetlands are where they are. It's the level of disturbance and replication type stuff that we're going to be proposing. So that's what the hurdle is. It's, you know, it's not like a typical, you know, few hundred square feet of wetland disturbance. It's quite a bit of wetland disturbance to get that driveway in, so, because there's no way, no way, other way to access the upland areas.
With the current blueprint we have, running into issues, that blueprint is subject to change.
Sure.
To what, to what degree? Because the, we're voting on the special permit to allow construction. Please tell me if I'm wrong here. So as time goes on, this driveway, this plan can change drastically in order to get that common driveway in there?
No, well, the common, the driveway location, I don't think would change, because it's the least intrusive environmentally right now. It disturbs the least amount of square footage. I think the only other alternatives to this proposal is A, a single-family dwelling, or B, some sort of affordable housing project. That's the only other two things that could occur here, so...
What's the ballpark investment on the town of Norton to get to that point?
What's the what? I'm sorry?
Well, I'm just saying, from, besides the permit, you mentioned that wells need to be built, in other forms.
The construction costs are going to be significant, already. I have no idea. We, we haven't sent it out for bid or anything yet. And the last time we did, it was a little different iteration. There weren't the, the tanks, the storage tanks. We weren't proposing fire suppression services in the house, houses, so, you know, it's going to be expensive by the end of the day.
An average, and I can't compare and contrast, but what was like ballpark figure for something similar or something not as complicated as this?
I don't know. I mean, when you were, when you include it, kind of on the spot, you know, taking into everything into account, we have retaining walls, we have a culvert, we have deep wells, we have extra storage tanks, you have septic systems. I mean, it could push a couple hundred thousand dollars a lot for infrastructure alone.
Retaining wall alone, how much would that go for this?
Oh, I'd have to, I don't know that off the top. Those, those will have to be fully designed prior to building permit, the retaining walls.
So the general ballpark, you're looking at multiple six figures in order to get this to...
Yeah, I would say each lot could cost up to, you know, everything in, all soft costs, and infrastructure could cost around $200,000 a lot.
So, I'm looking for my, you want to say something else? Sure.
Just one thing that I was thinking, if you guys were talking about, the soil that's up in the highlands, is that absorbing a lot of water and slowing the bracing for the wetlands?
It's hard to tell. I mean, there were some soils tested on about 10 years ago, and there's some, there were a couple of test pits done that had less than two minutes an inch, so yeah, it's probably a pretty good soil that's up. Once you get away from those wetlands, we think that's pretty good soil.
But you have not tested soils to date.
No. We'll have to submit as, either as part of the NOI or a separate NOI, plans to cross the wetlands to do test pits for a soil absorption system, and to do drainage tests that Patrick had mentioned in the areas that we're proposing infiltration, so...
So if you take a lot of, well, again, my question with the, if this area is absorbing a lot of this water, 500, you mean, it's all go to this one spot?
Criteria.
That's slowing it down?
I wanted to read that. Keeps me to find it quickly.
That driveway?
No, cause you have to follow recharge requirements that the state outlines. So if you make something impervious, at the end of the day, you have to put so much back into the ground so that the aquifer doesn't, isn't affected.
Basically, if supposedly taking the same amount of water, it's just being distributed differently, is that?
Maybe differently from a few feet here and there, but in the same catchment area. So it gets to the same point.
So you're saying, like, still the same amount of water is gonna go through, all the basins the same way and the driveways the same way and all that?
It doesn't have to be the same. It can be less, but it still has to be a percentage of it. And that's in our, we've done a couple of drainage reports that calculate all that to meet the standards, so.
No, that's.
My house isn't at these levels. And I'm just afraid, you know, I'm afraid it is. I don't want to push this way.
Yeah, we're containing all proposed up there. What's existing today will be the same when we're done. As far as offsite flows.
Which allows.
No.
Which, which defines.
You can't change drainage patterns. Still has the ability to go through the houses and go straight down south if that's where it goes, or to go towards the east, towards the culvert, yeah.
Okay, so, um.
Talks about the conditions and it's all under, in 34 or 47.
I may have a different, my 34 is now your 34.
4.4.7 under use rights.
Okay.
After, after the.
It'll have to come back.
No, it's. Might not. Right. Okay, so.
Could I just ask a couple of questions? Trying to find where the, uh, the limit of a common driveway is 500 feet.
Oh, it's in the definitions?
Definitions of this?
In the zoning bylaw, yep. So in the zoning bylaw under common driveway?
Do you have a page just so that I?
Page 18. It's number one, and it defines the distance.
We don't have a, a limit on singular driveway, do we?
I don't believe so. There's, there's no permit.
Just a common, right.
There's no permit associated with just a single driveway.
And I'm kinda playing devil's advocate here.
All right.
At least from planning board's perspective, you could run four driveways.
They would have to get permission from the conservation.
Well, no, I'm, I'm from the planning board.
Yeah, 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 well.
You could build four houses.
You certainly could ask.
You could ask.
I, I understand that. But what they're going to then say, as an alternative, make it a common driveway, go talk to the planning board. But you are within your, build a bridge over the wet, I, I, I'm being ridiculous, but I just wanna understand the parameters of, of what to stake here.
So I, I think that point, though, is addressed, turn the page. There's a separate part of the common driveway standard that says that it shall not disrupt existing drainage patterns. And so I understand that if it was.
Page 19.
If it, if it was singular driveways, we'd actually be disrupting the wetlands more than we are in this. It's actually.
I, I understand. I, I, I understand. I, I just.
You're right. A, a special permit is not needed, would not be needed for a singular driveway.
And.
You would, you would need the, uh, wetlands permits. Right. And you, and so what Mr. Fernandez is saying is that if you went that route, you might, would likely be asked, but, to minimize wetlands impacts and, and look at a common driveway as, as an answer.
My point is, is that, and it's, maybe it's just me, but I believe people have property rights. And you have a right to at least attempt to put four houses here, drive with conventional driveways. Because there, there's nothing I see in our zoning bylaws that precludes someone from building a house three miles in the woods. They wanna deal with that inconvenience. What's tripping you up is the wetlands.
Correct. And that, and also, we efforts minimal impacts.
No, again, I understand that. But I'm just, I'm try, I'm trying to at least establish an absolute. And the absolute, at least to me, seems to be that you have a right, or not you, but the property owner has a right to access their property, um, but for the wetlands issue.
Yeah, Matt pointed out in the bylaw also that it states that plant, when you're submitting a plan like this to the planning board, that it's the responsibility under this bylaw to think about the environmental impacts.
And, and I absolutely agree with you. I, I just wanna start from that premise that, again, we're not doing you any favors by having you have a common driveway.
You are, though, because the, the practical reality is that it would be cost prohibitive to do four separate wetland crossings. And so, that's part of the reason why we would propose a common driveway, to alleviate that hardship. I know hardship is more than a standard of variance, but this bylaw allows for a special permit for up to four dwellings. And so, this is a circumstance where obviously we, we wouldn't ask for those, the common driveway, if we didn't have this issue affecting the property.
And, and again, I'm not advocating that you put four driveways in. I'm just, for my own application, trying to make an argument that, that's, you're not precluded from doing that from a zoning standpoint. Again, I'm not advocating you do it. I simply wanna understand that, yeah, you have a right to at least attempt that. You're gonna run into a buzzsaw conservation. I understand that. And when you run into that buzzsaw, you would say, oh, we'll do a common driveway.
Yeah.
And go back to the planning board.
So.
I would just, I, I understand the point, but it would be a theoretical right.
Yep.
Because of the costs associated.
Yep, I understand.
Right, so the, the practical reality would be that, uh, we have four separate wetland crossings.
Yep.
And part of the special permit standard is to recognize that the effort to minimize impacts on the environment, on the waters. So, so our special permit request is, is trying to do that.
You're here for a special permit only for the common driveway. You, you're not, you don't require a special permit. If you sold off each one of those lots one at a time, went in for a building permit, dealt with a conservation commission. And again, just, I'm, it's just an academic argument that I, I just wanna understand what, what happens.
So let me just read the conditions for, so, special permits are granted on condition. And so, this, this is the statement in Arizona by law. It says, "As a condition of granting a permit, a permit or special permit, the granting authority shall find that the petition for exception is socially and economically desirable, that it would satisfy the existing need, that the advantage of the proposal outweigh by far any detrimental effects, and that such effects on the neighborhood and environment should not be significantly greater than could be expected from development if the permit or special permit were denied, that the applicant has no reasonable alternative available to accomplish his purpose, and that specific conditions to minimize detrimental effects and protect the neighborhood have been imposed, and if necessary, secured by bond or otherwise." Those are the conditions under which a special permit can be granted. So if you wanna take each point and discuss if you feel it meets that, we, I mean, that's a deliberation on a special permit.
Right, if, let's say that upper lot, and again, I don't know what the topography is, but that upper lot, if you were to sell that tomorrow and I were to buy it, I have a right to cross wetlands to get to my property. Uh, and I would do that by putting in a driveway, try to minimize my impact, but I, I'm allowed, under conditions, to disturb up to 5,000 square feet of wetlands. Am I wrong?
Which, yes, but you would be way over.
You'd be way over 5,000 with each of the, which three, well, you'd be over five. This is the least impactful access which utilized, goes over two of the lots, which is why there'll be, need to be an easement. If you add four driveways, any one of those four driveways would have a lot greater impact than this ones, to the wetlands.
I just, and again, I haven't obviously done the calculations, but if, just that upper lot, I'm using that as an example. I don't know which is the worst, but I could find a way to get to that upper part of the property, uh, putting in a driveway and disturb as little as possible. And if that was under 5,000 square feet, I can do it. And I can do that, if each one of those lots is sold today, each one of those owners could do that. All I'm saying is that you have, rather than pursue, and I understand economics, uh, probably plays the bigger part of this, um, this, this application than, than the environment, but nonetheless, um, rather than do that, you've put in a proposal for a common driveway. Um, I guess I'm, I'm still starting with a premise that people have a right to access their property. And this seems to me to have the least impact on the environment as opposed to the option of four separate driveways.
One more.
One of the things I need to.
Go to the microphone.
One of the things you just said was about securing a bond.
Yeah, but if necessary.
If necess, but again, we're all doing this, we're using numbers and calculations, not on everything that's being done. And you.
The bond is, for example, the, the previous applicant had surety for the landscaping to ensure that it's completed. That's a bond.
I understand that. Now, I, I wanna ensure that I'm not gonna be impacted. So maybe something should be set aside for the butters in case something has to be changed, in case, if the driveway changes and something happens. I, I just wanna make sure that I'm protected.
We, we can only request a bond for, um, completion of the plan, of the project according to plan.
But again, the, on this plan.
That's how our authority is, I would.
All right, so there's, so there's no way for me to be protected?
Only through completion of the project according to plan. If they don't build it as to plan, and they put a smaller culvert, and there's some issue there, then.
Say their calculations were wrong, and I start getting, I'm sorry, and I start getting water in my backyard, and I have to re-landscape. Who's responsible?
We don't have authority to, to require a bond for that.
So if that happens, I'm just out of luck. Is, I'm just, I'm just.
That's what the, that's how the bonding authority works. It's for the completion of the project according to plan.
So if their calculations are off.
Well, that's what we had, that's what we had a peer review engineer look at it independently, who didn't.
Again, fingers crossed, but, you know, I hope the stars align and whatever, but if they don't.
There's no 100% guarantee on anything, so I don't know, you know, what, we can't guarantee that absolutely nothing will ever go wrong. And you don't know if it's tied to this project or not. You'd have to prove that.
Oh, I know. If, if the houses go up and then all of a sudden they get water, it's just a fluke.
Well.
Just a question.
Okay, so, that's where we stand.
Well, based on all the information we've received, reviews and so forth, um, back to the question at hand as to the special permit, I will make a motion to approve the special permit to allow the construction of the common driveway exceeding 500 feet in length.
Okay, well, before I can do that, we'd have to close the public hearing.
Okay.
So, um, and then we also have potential, um, conditions. So if we close the public hearing, we're not taking any more input from, we can deliberate, but we're not taking any more information. So if you wanna close the public hearing, that's.
We'll close the public hearing.
Can we, can we just one, just very quick comment, because they're late in the hearing, about this legal standard for the special permit. There's just a couple of parts that I think are really important for this application. About, effects on the neighborhood environment should not be significantly greater than could be expected from development if the permit or special permit were denied. And so I think if you look at it from that perspective, like, if this was just one driveway for one house lot, it's still the same crossing, it's still the same impacts here. A lot of the concern's been about that. And so I, I think if you look at just that comparison, it's that if, if, if we don't have this, if the driveway was built without a special permit, it's still gonna be the same crossing. So, for example, let's always point out, you know, if a, if a housing development was put here, and if this lot was consolidated, it's one lot with apartments back here. If there was one lot servicing one development, I don't believe it would be needed a common driveway. So that's just one, one thing we'd like to kind of point out, is realistically, with one crossing, and so we really are minimizing those impacts to the point where it's basically the same impact as if it was just one driveway serving one building. And then the, the other, the other point in the, in the criteria is that the applicant has no reasonable alternative available to accomplish his purpose. So that's not, reasonably, realistically, practically, this crossing is the only way to put anything on the spot. And so, right now, we're proposing, you know, four single-family homes with one crossing. And there's really no reasonable alternative to the crossing. The 500-foot, foot standard is described in the, in the, in the definitions as providing safe access. So it's not tied in with environmental impacts or anything like that. The, the bylaw describes safer access. And so with the width, uh, and the practical realities of where the upland is and where the dryland is, we'd, we'd just like to, um, uh, point that out to the, to the board that the issue we're hoping to make is whether we're providing safe access to these homes and not whether that width changes an environmental impact. Because that's, that's what the bylaw says.
However, the granting, just to clarify, the granting of a common driveway is a special permit.
Of course, of course. But the, the bylaw says, like, the, the, the driveway does not exceed 500 feet unless the planning board makes a determination that the driveway is a safe, legal access for fire, police, emergency vehicles. And so, the width of the driveway, the design, which, fire department didn't have any objections to this design and the turnarounds. I just would like to respectfully submit that that is the issue with length. And that, when we apply the, the other criteria, section 10, uh, 10.10, there really is no reasonable alternative to develop this property. And so, we just would like to emphasize those points that are in the bylaw.
Right, so getting back to Mr. Fernandez's position, if you were to build a single house here, you would have one driveway crossing. Build four houses without a special permit, you'd have four driveway crossings. So even if it was one house lot, you would still have a driveway crossing the, the stream and the wetland. So, so we have two issues. So, so the issue of the length is a.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Well, I don't know if you wanna keep discussing it before we close it. So, to be, so there, there's two issues here. One, there's the issue of the length, which is a public safety issue. And then there's the issue of granting a special permit for the common driveway. So if the board wants to talk about the length, are there any findings on regarding the issue of safety with regard to that?
Well, for me, I think one driver on this whole project is the ability to offer fire suppression. And I think that should be part of the, um.
Right.
One of the conditions.
Yeah, I would agree that without the fires, without the approval of the fire department, clearly there's a safety.
And, and the ability to perform the way that they're designed to perform. I mean, they haven't, you guys haven't done any tests for wells or anything out there yet, have you?
No, there were some preliminary soils done way back. So, I, I don't think there should be any challenges, but obviously, we understand we can't secure building permits without all that information. And that'll be designed by a fire suppression engineer, by the applicant, not by us.
So be subject to having wells on site with sufficient water to support the fire suppression system.
You had mentioned that you were gonna have tanks.
Yeah, so we'll have a, it'll just be a regular domestic type well. We'll have a tank that's full with a pump at the bottom. So that's how we overcome any pressure issues. That pump, the storage, uh, the storage tank will have to have enough water for like a 10-minute type event. So that's all fire code stuff.
So our common.
We've just preliminary, you know, we just said, here's how big tank's gonna have to be. It, there's a lot more detail that I'll.
So the, right.
Just a quick question on, has there been a survey west, north and south of this lot right here?
No, uh.
West and north?
From where the four lots, I just wanted to know, like, west of that, off the property.
So off of here?
Yeah, is anything?
I'm not, we haven't performed anything. I think a little bit south, uh, whose land is that? The court?
The court company's done some surveys. They're, they were trying to develop their land, and I've seen their plans they have, because we were trying to see if we could work.
work together for both properties for a conservation filing, and they have more hurdles than we do for wetlands crossing. So I know a survey's been done there.
So currently, there are buildable lots south of this and possibly west of it.
Yeah, I think right now, they might be proposing one buildable lot. I don't want to speak for them by any means, because, but I, you know, I know that they have significant onsite wetlands as well, so.
Just getting back to the, addressing the safety issue, the fire department, we have comments from Deputy Fire Chief David Miles, who says that installation of sprinkler systems would be a life safety enhancement if our apparatus were delayed to getting to the scene. Excuse me, this would alleviate safety concerns regarding a lack of hydrants in the area. Earlier comments regarding maintenance of the common driveway remain, lack of maintenance can hinder fire apparatus from getting to the scene in a timely manner. And I will speak to the length issue. Then the other issue is whether it meets the criteria for a special permit. I guess the condition is that socially, economically desirable, satisfy an existing need, the advantages of proposed outweigh by far any detrimental effects, that such effects on the neighborhood and environment should not be significantly greater than would be expected from development if this permit or special permit were denied. So, we understand that there's a drainage problem, Culver and Hodges Street exist, whether or not this is developed. If it was a single lot, which they could build, it would be one driveway likely in the same location as the common driveway. So I don't know how much difference you'd get with a single lot versus four lots. You're still getting a crossing in the same location. It was denied, you get four separate driveways, and that's a bigger, more wetlands impact, so. Any other further discussion, information? Ready to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
You motion to close the public hearing? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
I'll also vote yes. The, is it a waiver request for the... Did you follow, would you have, is there a waiver request for the length? I don't remember how it was put before the board, or just...
In the original application?
Right. Where the vote is on?
Common driveway, maybe.
In excess?
They're saying it's adequate to give access.
Okay, so it's just a vote, it's just a request for a special permit with the, what do we say over here? I don't know why our requirements are in definitions. It seems like a hot place to put this, but, alright, at least what do we say here? Okay, so the planning board needs to make a determination on the length. The length requested is an excess of 500 feet. The planning board have a, make a finding that it will provide reasonable access.
Here so?
So, given, given the, given conditions that it's, you would have the fire suppression system, the tank, storage tank, and that there's a requirement for maintenance of the common driveway.
Of the common driveway.
Maintain it accessible.
Yeah.
So given that, the board would find...
And the proposed width, I forget what that is.
And the proposed width being 20 feet, which is, which is wide. I mean, we have streets that are 20 feet wide, so. Okay. So the other, then, the board have to make a motion regarding the request for the common drive, subject to conditions we've discussed.
Do you want two separate motions? One, in essence, to waive the 500-foot...
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, yeah.
I'll move that the planning board waive the 500-foot common driveway restriction on the basis that we've found that it does provide safe and reasonable access for fire police and emergency vehicles.
Subject to conditions.
Subject to the conditions we've just outlined.
Okay.
Second.
I have a second, okay. Take a vote on the waiver, Mr. Durant?
No.
Okay, Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty? Another waiver on the length. That's where we're voting on.
I gotta vote no.
Okay, and I will vote yes, so that's four to two. So the waiver passes. Now, the special permit is a, needs a five-member, five votes, five affirmative votes. Needs a super majority. So if you make the motion in the affirmative, we'll vote in that manner. Someone make a motion?
I move that we grant a common driveway, a special permit for common driveway.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I'll take a, any other discussion? I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
No.
Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
I'll give it to him, yes.
Okay, and I will also vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we still have a few business items, I think, to take care of. What's that? Oh, we never voted on it yet?
Yeah.
Okay, you, you have the...
So I have a waiver.
The zoning bylaws fall apart, so I have to go.
Time to quit. Do you need to agenda?
So, I never gave the report, but... The waiver was for...
So...
I've got too much paper, I'm burying my other...
You can do the report of the Planning and Economic Development Director. That's on your tab B.
Okay, now I got it.
So basically, it's going through, over the applications we just heard. Otherwise, I did want to discuss with you, a waiver will be required that was overlooked at the last meeting for the rider truck decision, so they had requested two waivers, one being Article 20 in lighting, to allow 30-foot light poles where 20-foot is required, and two being site plan approval, to allow plans to be prepared at a scale of one to 40, where 1 to 20 is required.
We did the 30-foot?
No, we missed, I checked the minutes, and we had not actually voted.
I think we voted on it for the original plan, but not the modified one.
Not the modification.
That was the issue.
Yeah.
So we already voted on it once for the site, but because they modify the plan, technically, we should have voted on it again.
It's not your fault.
No, you just overlooked it.
So, do they have to come in and do that?
No, we could, we could probably do it just...
I'm drafting the decision. I have two weeks to draft it, so I'll have another week to finish it.
Okay.
But we could, it would be helpful to vote on it, just to clean it up, so they could issue the...
Sure.
So there was the rider truck, one was doing a motion to allow 30-foot light poles where 20 is required.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I'll take a vote on that one. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
I'll also vote yes. The other one was to allow plans to be prepared a scale of one to 40 feet, where 1 to 20 feet is required.
So moved.
Second.
I'll take a vote then. Mr. Durant?
Yes.
Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, no?
Me?
Yeah, okay, I'll vote yes on that one, too. Okay, so that's, clean that up. We have approval minutes from 321, which is a very lengthy set, and since I haven't had a chance to really edit or clean it up, it sounds like it's probably worthwhile holding off to your next, the next meeting, so that they're...
Less than a Freudian slip there.
Your next meeting, in May, to approve them, but it'll be, it'll be more efficient to have a cleaner set to start with.
Yeah.
It was the hearing from the zoning article, so they're quite lengthy. And we do not have any bills and warrants today, correct?
No bills and warrants, no.
Okay, so, this being my last meeting, I would like to say it's been a pleasure working with you all, and I've appreciated all your support, as Tabitha and all the boards and town planners over the years, so.
How many years has it been?
I think 18, but...
18.
That's a long time.
A long time, so.
It's going to be sorely missed, that's for sure.
We will miss you, Joanne.
Well, I can watch you on TV, right?
You too.
If you're watching, I'd be worried.
You're not going to miss me.
Mr. Daley is also at the end.
It's been, it's been a lot of fun. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I want to thank everybody for the, Tabitha, the card, and everything was great. No, it's been great. I really, and I, I know that everybody's in good hands, so.
I'll miss the experience of both of you.
You can catch my planning board meeting recap on the Facebook page.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that.
And don't forget our planning and zoning Facebook page as well.
So, and elections are the 25th. We have a candidate sitting here being very, doing all his homework, so that's a good idea. So I think at this point, having no other business, the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alright, standing adjourned at 9:15.